Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of regular council meeting of April 4. And I would like to call this meeting to order. A few announcements. I know Tom has some updates on the jail and bail. So Tom would you like to give us an update, please?
Yeah, last Friday, the Drumheller Legion number 22 held a jail and bail where a number of people around town were unceremoniously abducted and thrown into jail. And there was a very vicious judge who who set prices on their release. And I don't know, for some reason they kept upping my bail and upping Heather's bail and everybody. But it was very, very well attended, very well done. Thank you to everybody who got incarcerated and and everybody who came up with their bail. And thank you to all the volunteers. And I think they said the Legion made about $20,000. So a great community fundraising effort and and well done, everyone.
Excellent. Thanks, Tom. Crystal, you got a couple announcements?
I do. Just want to remind everyone that the Chamber of Commerce has the fan vote for the 2022 Business Excellence Awards. It's just online on the Drumheller District Chamber of Commerce website, and that voting closes on April 7. So thank you to everyone who has nominated businesses and six categories, I believe. So just want to update you that as well as April 14 is Travel Drumheller AGM at the BCF at 6:00 PM. They would like everyone to register. You can register online. It's on the Travel Drumheller webpage. Thank you.
Wonderful. And I'd just like to announce that today we started, or actually on Saturday, I believe, April 2nd, we started the 2020 Challenge. So we're asking everybody out there for to get out and help pick up litter 20 minutes a day for 20 days. And by then we'll hit Earth Day. We'll have our town all cleaned for Earth Day. And use it as a time to get exercise, fresh air, clean your heart, clean your soul, and clean the earth. So please take the time and get out and help us clean our community. All right, I would like to ask if there's any additions to the agenda, please? Don't see any. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, please? Tom?
I move the council adopt the agenda for the April 4, 2022 regular council meeting as presented.
Second, please. Crystal, all in favor? Carried. Can I get a motion to adopt the minutes of the March 21, 2022 regular council meeting minute, please? Pat?
I motion the council approve the minutes of the March 21, 2022 regular council meeting as presented.
Second, please. Tony? Comments? All in favor? Carried. And now we'll move on to 6.1 Community Development and Social Planning presentation, please, April?
Yeah, I'll just show my screen. Okay, can you all see the presentation?
It's not in presentation mode, April.
Is it now?
No, you have all of the notes in there.
Huh. Just a second. Is that better?
No change.
Okay. Sorry, just give me a second here. I'm not sure why it's not working.
Just try to go over to the from beginning on the PowerPoint.
Yeah, that's that's what I was clicking. And it's works on mine and it looks right on mine. Yeah, I'm trying to figure out. It's all gone.
From beginning? April, you have it now.
Okay, well, maybe while April is working on that, let's move on to the next thing so we keep ourselves moving. So we'll come back to you, April. We'll move on to 7.1.1, please, Daryl.
Thank you, Your Worship. So what you have before you is a request for decision for council to approve the long awaited CN Rails to Trails, so the agreement between the town of Drumheller and CN Rail for a 25-year lease of all the rail line in Drumheller. The line goes from Wayne, the south boundary of Drumheller to the over to Rosedale through Drumheller into Newcastle and then up into that, or sorry, into Midland. And includes all the bridges, including the Midland Bridge. The cost for the lease is $1 a year or $25 for the 25-year timeframe. The town is required to do any and all improvements to it. So if we'd like to do a walking trails or active transportation trails, the town is required to put all of the costs in for that. And we have the option to do an extension once we've sort of gone along that path. I guess no pun intended, in the future there. So the CN lease is very explicit about it's for active transportation only. So walking, bicycle riding, etc. It's not for vehicle traffic as in to be clear, it's not a secondary access to Midland for ambulances or for vehicles. They've been very clear about making sure that it's just for pedestrians. So that's basically the intent of it. So we can get a motion to approve this. That would be great. And then I can take any questions once it's up.
Go ahead. Sorry, sorry, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I move that council approve the 25-year lease with CN Rail for the Rails to Trails Active Transportation project at a cost of $1 per year.
Second, please. Stephanie? Comments, please? Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I would just like to say that this is a long time coming. I mean, we've been talking about this even before I was on council, and that's about 47 years ago. And it's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for this valley. I mean, you look at some of the other areas around that have done the Rails to Trails. And they have been had absolute phenomenal success. Not just for residents, but for tourists as well. And so this is a huge step in the right direction and and pat on the back to the mayor and and CAO and everybody that was involved in this. This this is a fantastic, fantastic thing for the Drumheller Valley.
Tom, Crystal?
Yeah, I think this is a great addition to your community. It's going to connect the whole valley once it's all completed. Which has always been, I thought, a really great thing to connect east to west of the valley. I do have a quick question, though, Daryl, because I'm a type of person that does not rely on what 19th Street East of Fifth Street East is. I rely on landmarks. So can you tell me where the first section of the trail development will be not based on landmarks? Thank you.
But yeah, I thought I thought you were going to say, I remember the people who lived there four owners ago, but
I might.
So basically, it's from Walmart to back to the Highway 10 Fifth Street intersection. So where where the sort of enter entering downtown would be. So it's the piece that doesn't really have a sidewalk right now. I know over the last few years, there's been a lot of discussion about creating a I know over the last few years, there's been a lot of discussion about creating a sidewalk adjacent to the highway, which isn't our, our land to do that on. So, this solves a piece to allow people to be able to travel to and from Walmart by pedestrian access right along the highway without being on the highway or immediately adjacent to it.
Great, thank you very much.
Tony?
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate what Councilor Zerisky was indicating. Strategic priority for a long, long time. Lots of heavy lifting to get here, both by council and administration. It's gone back and forth and we've finally reached a beneficial lease agreement. So, huge opportunity for the town and hats off to everybody involved in it.
Patrick?
Yeah, I'd like to actually commend administration for the hard work that they have put into it. Quick question, going forward in the next years, do we have a lined-up plan? Or will we consult for what the next legs of it will be as we go forward?
What we're hoping to do, once we see the work involved with the first leg, Pat, then we'll come back to the communities and offer some suggestions of where we think we're going next. So, the two places that immediately I think of is one, one, if we went from Walmart to Rosedale, then that solves a access issue, that narrow highway, right, you know, very fast roadway. So, that could be one section, but then there's also the piece that takes you from there to, from Fifth Street all the way towards Knack Mine. It connects up through trails in there. So, I think it's really a matter of what we, what we want to see and how much time and effort we want to put into actually trail development over the next few years.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like to, would like to commend Daryl and everybody else on all the work that's been done. It's been a, been a busy road for a couple of years getting this done. And I know that there's some residents in the valley that also worked hard to put some information together for us. So, shout out to Luigi and Derek Kaiser for their help on that. And I know that Denise, or sorry, Erica has worked very diligently with her, everybody in the team to put a bunch of frequently asked questions together for this. So, there will be a news release going out and all those FAQs will be there. So, please check on that. I'm sure that almost everything you possibly could think of was put in there. But if there is a question that we have missed, please don't hesitate to reach out. So, thank you to everyone involved in making this happen. So, therefore, can I get all in favor? Carried? Looks like we're still waiting, so we'll carry on. 7.2.1, please? Dagan, I believe you're taking this one?
Yes, thank you. So, as we're moving towards construction of the downtown dike, as I mentioned last week in the community information session, we're hoping to get that tender out this week and get contractors starting to think about the work. But one of the other pieces of the work is there is an overhead power line located on the crest of the dike. And that needs to be relocated so that we can get going with Phase 2 of the construction, which will happen late summer and fall. So, it's owned by Atco Electric and they have provided us with a quote to complete that work. And it's $353,000, $353,471.43. And for that work, they will remove the overhead power line and directionally bore a new pipe under the road and then relocate the services that way. And so, that work is required to be completed prior to the end of August so that the Phase 2 dike construction can get going without delay. And Atco Electric has indicated that they would like to receive, go ahead for the work by the end of April in order to be able to order materials and proceed and get that scheduled for August.
Thanks, Dagan. Can I get a motion, please, council? Tony?
I move that the proposed Atco Electric Utility Relocation Project with a budget of $353,471.43 plus GST be approved as presented.
Secondary, please? Tom? Comments? Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just wondering, it seems to me I had heard in a, in a previous discussion that there were some other utilities or something around there that might have to be relocated as well. Will, will that, will those be incorporated into this project as well? Or, I can't remember exactly.
So, there is a Shaw utility line that also needs to be moved. And instructional drilling for that will be done in conjunction with Atco's planned work. And we are expecting to receive a separate quotation from Shaw to move their actual services.
Anybody else? So, Dagan, I just want to clarify some, so no matter what, no matter how this dike ends up designed, because we still got our public hearing on April 19th and we still got decisions to make, no matter which way it goes, these still have to be removed, correct?
That's correct. So, any design alternate that was selected would have required moving this overhead power line just because it's located on the crest of the dike. So, to raise the dike, it needs to get out of the way.
Okay. All right, anything else, council? All in favor? Carried? Okay, we shall move on to Protective Services, Greg, I will let you up on 7.3.1, please.
Thank you, your worship. Good afternoon, members of council and administration. Before you is a request for decision for a new tanker truck for the fire department. We are recommending the purchase of one fire truck, excuse me, fire tanker truck from Fort Gary Trucks of Winnipeg, Manitoba in the amount of $383,940. A request for tender was posted in the usual fashion with returnable date of March 1st of 2022. Only two submissions were received and these were scrutinized very closely. Extensive evaluation process was undertaken to make sure there's a wide discrepancy in the, in the prices quoted as well as the equipment supplied on each vehicle. As council members can see, there is a evaluation totaling 100% on the bottom of page 26. Fort Gary Trucks of Winnipeg was a successful bidder. We are recommending awarding the contract to Fort Gary in the amount quoted excluding GST. We need to replace a truck to keep us current, to keep us in a, in the state of industry emergency response and a new vehicle that is more user-friendly, vastly reduce maintenance costs and a much more current, current equipped electronic capable unit for the department. This amount of money, however quoted, is in effect almost $34,000 above the approved capital budget amount. I have had conversations with the CAO and the Director of Corporate Services about this amount being in excess of what was budgeted. As regrettable as this is, I have been advised that any additional funds needed may be requested through MSI funding. The new apparatus will enable the town to maintain a high quality of firefighting response for the safety and protection of all our citizens. Upon award of council ceased to do so, the successful proponent will receive a letter advising them of their success. Similarity will advise the non-successful party of the same. Summary will be on the town website and we will do our usual posting on the Alberta Purchasing Connection website. Fire chief is with me here. We're happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thanks, Greg. Pat, would you like to make a motion, please?
Yes. I move that council approve the award for the supply and delivery of one commercial fire tanker truck to Fort Gary Trucks for the amount of $383,940 excluding GST. And that the additional funds shall be funded through MSI capital funding.
Secondary, Tom? Comments? Pat?
Just and I see on the, the breakdown for the, that both scored about the same for delivery time. What were those discussions like in light of how tough it is to get anything delivered in these day and age alone manufactured?
Yes, Mr. Koffler, it's, it is relatively rigorous and it will be an extensive period of time, perhaps in the area of nine to 13 months before the unit is delivered here. This one company did have units on site ready to go. But given the timing of our tender and, and the popular nature, I guess, of such an expensive vehicle, it's hard that I thought, hard time fathoming the money, but still, that is the, the, the cost of these units, they, they did sell out before the end of the year.
Thank you.
Tom, go ahead.
Didn't even sneeze on mic. That's pretty good. Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, maybe this is a silly question. What do we need a fire tanker truck for? Don't we have fire hydrants?
Who should we do? The chief will be happy to field that question.
Not in all areas. East Cooley only has two basic fire hydrants. And we needed to supplement any areas, for example, Greenwood Villa to supplement their private hydrants and mutual aid agreements with our neighbors, Starland, Knee Hill. We also have mutual aid agreements with them.
My, yeah, my second question was, was not the other fire truck that we bought, the ladder truck, does that not have tanker capability as well? Or am I wrong now?
That tank on that truck is only 800 gallons. And this particular tender tank we've got here is 2,000 gallons. They're replacing one in East Cooley. The other tanker that we have in our fleet is 1,600 gallons. And the tanker we have in the drum hall is 3,000 gallons. But the one in Drumheller is underpowered and also approximately 30 years old. So, definitely beyond its lifespan.
Tony?
Yeah, just, just a quick question with that particular unit. It's in the drum fire hall. That's the one, this one here is gonna replace?
It would probably be replacing either of those two units, depending which unit has a better resale value for number one. And preferably the number three unit in the drum hall, which is severely underpowered to climb any of the hills going either west or north to our mutual aid partners. It, it's kind of the situation where the driver of that unit responding opens the door just to make sure that it will make the hill.
Okay, which is my other question there is, and, and I think you partially answered it, what we're doing with our older unit, whether it's being redeployed, but you mentioned for sale?
Mr. Locker, we're going to phase out one unit, sir, that's quite old. And we'll determine which one we shall, if we're gonna phase it out, most likely sell it. And the new unit will hopefully held at Drumheller and we will move under, the underpowered perhaps unit, but larger tank to East Cooley. Where it doesn't have to move very far.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, well, you answered my questions throughout there, so thank you guys. All in favor? Carried? Okay, we'll move on to 7.4.1, Reg, please?
Thank you, council. In front of you is a request for decision to award the tender for the downtown multi-use plaza. We want to get the work done before funding expires. The tender closed March 15th. There was two bids that we received. Landform Inc. was the lowest bid with $1,017,507.69. Chandos was the other bidder, but quite higher. From a financial impact, the total budget's $1,419,500 for the plaza. That is 940,000 from the municipal stimulus program. An additional 408 was recently received from the Canadian Community Revitalization Fund. And then the remaining amount, 71,500 will be funded from the town. This budget will allow us to also have an outdoor washroom facility that's wheelchair accessible. So, the recommendation is to have a motion to award to Landform Inc. in the amount of $1,017,507.69 excluding GST to construct the multi-use plaza in 2022.
Motion, please? Crystal?
I move that the downtown multi-use plaza tender for construction be awarded to Landform Incorporated for the amount of $1,017,507.69 excluding GST.
Secondary, please? Tony, comments? Crystal?
Thank you, Reg, for getting this extra funding. Just a quick question about that. That funding is specific to only the downtown revitalization, correct?
Yeah, that funding is specific to the plaza project, actually.
Plaza project, okay. And then I did see your comment saying that the total broad, project budget includes the outdoor washroom and other infrastructure that's not included in the tender award. So, will another tender be going out?
Is our plan is to do a tender specifically for the washroom from, for its amount, yeah?
Okay, and that washroom is now added because of this new funding from the Canadian Community Revitalization Fund?
Exactly, yeah.
That was not in the first design plan?
Exactly, not in the, in this tender, yeah.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Tom, go ahead?
Yeah, just further to that, Reg, so how much, I'd like people to realize how much the washroom is gonna cost. Because it's massive, is it not?
Yeah, the estimate on the washroom is about $200,000 as part of the budget, yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you, Reg, for the work that you have done on that. I know it's been a long, ongoing project. And, and I think it's really important, as you explained, that you were able to get funding for this. And I know that some people ask why we would spend money on the plaza, but the province is giving funding to revitalize downtowns. And part of that refunding is to create social gatherings for the residents of our community and as well the visitors to enjoy. Is that not correct, Reg?
Absolutely, your worship. That's, yeah, the intent of the funding, so thank you.
Right, so if we don't, if we don't try to get it, somebody else is gonna get it anyways. So, congratulations on the work on getting that done. All in favor, everyone? Carried? All right, April, are you ready? Looks like it. I will let you take over now.
Okay, sorry about that, folks. I think we've got it sorted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent, and you can see the presentation?
Correct, yeah.
Super, okay. Thank you for your patience. I'm sorry about that. So, I'm here this evening to share a little bit of background on the Poverty Reduction slash Social Equity Program and actions over the past year. So, I guess just, I'm aware that there are a couple of new folks to council. So, I'm just gonna run quickly through why we're even talking about poverty reduction, what's happened so far and what we're looking at doing next. So, why are we talking about poverty reduction? Just a few stats here in Drumheller. So, 12.9% of children in Drumheller aged zero to five live in poverty. 44% of our tenants spend 30% or more on shelter costs, which is the line for considered to be in housing poverty. On average, we send, spend 7.25% more on food. In this last year, 314 households accessed the food bank. 51% of those recipients were children under the age of 18. The living wage in Drumheller, we calculated in 2020 at $23.77 an hour. And that reduced in 21 to 1970 as a result of a federal benefit change. But the average starting salary in Drumheller is As a result of a federal benefit change, but the average starting salary in Drumheller is sixteen dollars an hour. So just to kind of give a bit of, um, an idea of what our residents are experiencing. For many, poverty is a lived reality and, and we can actually do something about it. So, um, we know it's, uh, complex and multifaceted and systemic and it's often compounding and cyclical. So despite that, we have a tendency to look at individuals and their failings or their poor choices and what they could be doing better. Rather than looking at the system itself. So, uh, just as an example of that cyclical problem. Um, let's take an example of a rundown apartment that can exacerbate a child's asthma. Which leads to a call for an ambulance that generates a medical bill that can't be paid, which ruins a credit score, which hikes the interest rate on an auto loan. Which forces the purchase of an unreliable used car, which jeopardizes a mother's punctuality at work, which limits her promotion and earning capacity, which confines her poor housing. So, in the quote on the previous, um, slide, Desmond Tutu is not suggesting that we allow people to drown. Um, but he is saying that we can't focus solely on poverty alleviation, which is pulling people out of the river. So if you want to actually move the needle, you also have to look at a two-pronged attack and that takes a commitment in the form of time and energy and funding. To obtain tangible results that affect real change. Now, growing evidence points to best practice. Um, that taking an individual approach is neither sustainable or effective. And we can do better by investing in comprehensive poverty prevention. And reduction strategies rather than spending only or perpetually on alleviation. So. What's happened so far? Um, well, just to kind of continue from that, um. We, we conducted the needs assessment in twenty seventeen. Um, any identified affordable, accessible counselling and affordability and poverty reduction is the top two needs in our community. And so poverty reduction was actually number one and two for us. Um, and the eighteen, um, twenty eighteen and twenty twenty homelessness assessments also identified significant housing insecurity in the community. So that we know that if we want to affect real change, we need to collect, uh, uh, sorry, adopt a collective impact model. So in twenty nineteen, we established the Drumheller Poverty Reduction Alliance. Uh, more on that later. So, and it has the vision that you, uh, can see on the screen. So, I mentioned collective impact. So this is research-led, a research-led approach that seeks to address complex social issues and create. Lasting solutions to social problems on a large scale. And it identifies five core conditions that move us from fragmented action and results to collective action and deep durable impact. Now, I'm not gonna go into each of these, but I just wanna focus on the last one, because it's, uh, most relevant to today's discussion. So number five is creating and managing collective impact requires a dedicated staff and a specific set of goals. Um, to serve, uh, uh, to serve as the backbone for the entire initiative and to coordinate participating organizations and agencies. And that really ties in, um, with some capacity issues that we noticed. Um, when we, when we first started, um, the alliance. Um, and so once we got the alliance going, we made some progress. Um, but we realized that we needed some sustained leadership to make this work in a more meaningful way. And that's when we had requested funding from council to support, uh, a temporary coordinator to support the development of a poverty reduction strategy. So the initial objectives for that role, or the primary objective initially, was the development of a strategy and implementation plan. But it's clear that items two and three here, um, actually took precedence this past twelve months, and I'm gonna cover why that is in the next couple of slides. So, I'm not gonna speak to every single line, um, here, but I wanted to share the work carried out over the past, um, twelve months. Oops, sorry, I'm just scoot back on. There we go. So, um, a coordinator was appointed in April of twenty twenty one. In June, they hosted a conversation at the plaza and invited residents to attend and discuss needs in the community. And six folks did attend, and that really helped to build a bit of an understanding of poverty and what, um, the community was feeling and experiencing. Now, by the time the coordinator had been appointed in April, the Drumheller Poverty Reduction Alliance hadn't met for over twelve months because of COVID. So it took until September of twenty one to actually bring that alliance together again, and since then, there've been seven meetings. So while the work was, um, going on to rebuild those relationships and the membership of the alliance, we got the recreation fee assistance approved. And the poverty reduction coordinator also began work to address some immediate needs that had been identified, for example, through the food drive that you can see here. Um, and the tech drive. So again, I'm not gonna run through all of the slots of notes here, but just, um. To note that the six-month contract was extended by two months in April, uh, sorry, in October until December. And that wasn't enough time to develop a strategy, but Afalavi did spend a lot of time developing relationships with people with lived experience, for example. Just, just an example of, um, a really good, um, I guess, case study. He, uh, has told us about, uh, a person who had heard about the Tech Connect program. And he came along and he got a tablet and he asked how he could actually give back to the community. Um, this person said that they felt so welcomed and supported that they planned to stay once their program with Grace House was complete. Afalavi then told them about the mental health session with Joe Roberts, which was the Skid Row CEO session that was held just, um, a couple of weeks ago. Invited them along, and not only did he come, but also brought several others along with him. So those relationships are really essential if we're to understand and include people with lived experience in strategic planning. So also, uh, the poverty, um, tree at the plaza, um, was done and, um, the giving lane at, um, as well, which I think is something. The mayor had been, um, really keen on, and I've mentioned a few times even when I was still here. So. Couple is really highlighting some successes, and so we relaunched the Drumheller Poverty Reduction Alliance from ground zero. Which is absolutely essential to affecting real change. We can't have collective impact on our own and we're really stronger and have, will have greater success together. Um, since the Recreation for Assistance Program launched, there's been fourteen households applied. Um, the food drive supported the Salvation, um, Army Food Bank with a hundred and seventy-nine pounds worth of food, which is about a hundred and seventy-nine meals. Is how they would estimate that. We've got twenty-three devices collected for the tech driver, and nine of them have just been distributed. And fifty-four items were distributed from the poverty tree. They have, it's not been smooth sailing. Um, COVID nineteen pandemic did prove. And any large sort of social gatherings and meetings to move this forward. And as I mentioned, the alliance hadn't met since pre-March thirteenth, twenty twenty, which is the date I think sticks in all of our minds. Um, Drumheller Poverty Reduction Alliance members had left or changed jobs and there was concern actually about council's commitment to this work and that took some time. To address and bring people together again. There was, I think, perhaps some, uh, somewhat a lack of clarity around specific objectives and deliverables given the time. Um, and it was difficult to focus on a strategy until the alliance had reformed. There's also, um, some. Which is, I know that that's a council priority for this year. So, um, the, um, alliance is actually undertaking some training at the moment. Um, and in order to address the root causes of poverty, um, and, and empower people through, um, this process. We need to conduct that social equity strategy, which is council's priority and have an implementation plan. Um, and that would be the key objective, I would say, this year. Um, it would have include each of these pieces. Other things that, um, had been on, um, the plan for this year was to extend. Um, the programs that had been started, such as the Tech Connect Program and the subsidy for counselling and a subsidy for recreation. Um, by having a community access pass that would then be extended to other services or, um. Uh, items available from other agencies or businesses, um, discounts, for example. Um, there was, uh, looking at a, a public awareness campaign. And again, I'm not gonna go through all of these, but obviously having people be more aware of the services. That are available to them when they're in financial difficulty is really important. You know, philosopher people, this is the first time that they've been in that situation. I had actually had a client call me this, um, other day, whose successful business was hard hit during the pandemic. And she's currently choosing between food for her child or bills and risks losing her business or home without support and was asking me to know what the supports are. So just some risks then. Um, the poverty reduction coordinator position ended March thirty-first and has not been renewed following council's direction at the meeting of March twenty-first. There are a number of risks this time to consider and mitigate. So, obviously, there's a risk of perception around whether this is a priority. Um, certainly, it's a strategic priority of councils. Um, with reduced backbone support, the Drumheller Poverty Reduction Alliance, um, will have very limited capacity to develop that social equity strategy. With, without that person, um, in the short term. Um, we obviously do need to reassure organizations and individuals that have just recommitted to that work, that the town is also committed to, to. Um, there are a new, a number of new programs underway, including the community counselling program, the Recreation for Assistance Program, the others that I mentioned. And so they obviously require significant administration and those new processes and procedures are what we need to develop in the coming weeks as well. So. Um. Thank you. Uh, obviously, developing the strategy implementation plan does require. Uh, knowledge and experience and a significant investment in time. Um, and so capacity within the team without that position is limited. Um, so. We obviously want to consider how that might be addressed, and that's where these alternatives come from. So, the proposal or the recommended, um, alternative is that, um, a consultant be. Um, brought in to lead the co-design of the strategy and implementation plan, but there are other alternatives here for your review. And I'm sure there are others that aren't on the list as well. So that was quite a lot of, um, information that I've shared this evening, and I would be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Thank you, April. Um, I'll get you to take that off so I can see council. Okay, uh, I see Tom. Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, first thing I'd like to say is, nice to have April back. Welcome back. Uh, you have, you have been missed. Um, yeah, regarding, uh, the poverty reduction, just, just a couple of things. I mean, you talked about a number of. Um, things that kind of mitigate poverty, the, the food, the tech drive, the poverty tree, et cetera. Um, and, and I guess I'm wondering, how do we? Like, if the idea is to reduce poverty as, as per Desmond Tutu's comment. Uh, what KPIs, what, what key performance indicators would show? Um, success, that, that we would actually be. Bringing people out of poverty rather than just, you know, giving them food in the food bank, that's great. Um, giving them a computer, you know, all that's good, but what, what kind of KPIs would we have? And I, I've asked this question before. To show that, you know, whatever we do would actually be reducing poverty in Drumheller.
Yeah, I mean, I think there are a few, um, and I think actually part of the strategy development and implementation plan would outline exactly what they ought to look like in this community. Examples would be a reduction in the number of people utilizing the food bank, for example. Um, the census is obviously just being completed and we're still waiting for the data to come through. But next census, we have five years between now and then. Um, and so if the number of people that, uh, on there is, um, on the LICO threshold, the low income cutoff threshold, or the LIM, which is the low income measure threshold. That would be a very good indicator of progress. Um, I guess if applications to DHA, like, uh, Drumheller Housing reduced, that would be a good KPI to. Number of people accessing the programs that we put in place reduced, that would be a positive sign as well, as long as it wasn't just because they didn't know they existed. Right? But I think, um, there are quite a few measures that we could choose. And the best way to understand what the most appropriate ones are for this community is through that process of developing a strategy and implementation plan. Hope that helps.
Tony, go ahead.
Yes, uh, welcome back, April. Just a couple of questions with regards to the position here that we're struggling with. Everybody recognizes poverty. It is our strategic priority as well and, and. I'd like to speak specifically to the, to the last position that was held, and that was a temporary position, I understand. It was provincially funded and now we're looking to make it a full-time. I understood it to have some, some deliverables, which, which you touched on, and that was the poverty reduction strategy itself, and, and I guess. Through a number of reasons, it hasn't evolved to that, so. I guess I struggle with what it has done in the last twelve months and where it's going in the next twelve. And are either one of us real clear as to the direction that it takes and, and what the future deliverables with be, would be. And the second point to that, it is. Is that a town of Drumheller-funded employee or is that a direction of FCSS and that funding on that side? So if you could touch on those two, please.
Uh, sure, um, so. In terms of the position, um, my understanding is that it was council-funded this last year on a temporary basis, not funded through the province or a grant. With, there have been grants that have supported aspects of the work, and actually, we have some of those even rolling into this year for aspects of the work. Um, but mostly, I believe it was town-funded, Maurice, you may have a much clearer picture on that. Um, in terms of the position itself, the position is, is finished as of March thirty-first. And per the recommendations on the slide, um, if that position isn't going to continue for now. The, the ask is around a consultant to support the development of the strategy. Because at that point, once we have a strategy and implementation plan, that allows us to come back to council and say. These, these are the things that the strategy and implementation plan have identified as the, um, actions that the town can actually move on. And there will be others that will be for other agencies potentially to move on or community groups or, or, you know, provincially or for work of the MLA, et cetera. And then council is in a position to say, yeah, actually, we do want to move on this piece and this piece and this piece. That's kind of the, the suggestion, because we don't have that position anymore.
Yeah, and, and I guess that was kind of where I thought we would be now, i- is, you know, what are the needs that? That can be met now, what can we do about it and kind of where's a direction we could take, but, but none of that has really come together. Maybe a consultant could bring that together or. It's not clear on, on that part of it. As to where we go from here, I guess, on, on the, on the social needs part, poverty.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, sorry if I'm not answering your question, um, forgive me. I, I think what I'm saying is that in order for us to address. Uh, the two-pronged attack, because we can, we can continue with the hot meals program, you know, while other the funding lasts, we can continue with. A subsidy for counselling and we can have the recreation fee assistance policy. But all of that's alleviation, right? That's just pulling people out of the river, right? It's not preventing them falling in in the first place. And for us to really understand how we need to do that as a community and the town will have a, a part to play in that. That's where the strategies development comes in, and, and as you said, that had been, the intention had been that the position would do that over that last year. And for the reasons I explained, that was just really difficult to do. Yeah.
Okay, good.
Crystal?
Um, thank you, April, for all the details. Um, actually, some of my questions just got answered, but I do have a few more. Um, what's, are you aware of any future funding for this type of position from the provincial government? Has there anything come out?
Uh, so, so we have some funding that is rolled to twenty twenty-two, it's extended till the end of twenty twenty-two to support some aspects of this work. Um, in terms of new grants, um, I haven't found any yet, but I'll be honest. Uh, I've only been in the seat for a couple of weeks and I haven't started looking yet. Um, certainly, the tip, typically, if there is something, they're not usually paying for a consultant.
Okay.
Um, around these things, usually it's at the point where you have the, the plan and the actions that you want to take. That's typically where you can then start looking for funding to meet those particular aspects. But that's, I don't, haven't looked recently, so there may be something.
Okay, no, I understand. Well, I do realize you just got back, you're trying to catch up, so. Um, I know that, um, as a member of the Drumheller Housing, uh, boards, uh, we are needing to do a housing needs assessment again this year, so. Maybe that's something that could be provided for the strategic, uh, priorities as well from the housing needs assessment, so. So I think that's something that should be coordinated with the poverty reduction. So. Yeah, that's all my questions for right now. Thank you, April.
Anyone else? Yeah, I just got a few, April. So. I'm not trying to be the devil's advocate here, but we've been talking, we started back in my first year as elected. We all met Salvation Army. We split into about six groups. We, we had meetings and I'm telling you, I'm, I feel like I'm meeting to death. And I don't, I don't want to, like, I want to help this thing. And so if we are just going to keep meeting to meet, then I would rather, if we're going to help, then let's give money for food. Let's give money for tech and let's give money. And I would rather us come up with some recreation fees so that our kids can go to Toody Swims and, and get more use of the BCF and that kind of thing. And, and, you know, I spent a lot of time in the last week on this with talking to different organizations. And it seems like the schools are kind of, if we can get kids through grade 12, then typically, I mean, we couldn't, nobody could control COVID or the economy or anything else. So that's going to happen. And that's a cycle thing that we can't, you know, we can't predict. But maybe we've got to, you know, if, if we got to help fund to make sure, like, I would rather if a child is struggling to get through school and, and needs support or helps to pay for his fees or his or her fees or, you know, somewhere. But I want to see something like, it feels like we just spin and and it's right, like, we should have KPIs. We should be able to monitor this. We should not have been spending four years now. And I feel like we're still going. I'm not sure. And so, you know, you wanted, your recommendation is to get a consultant and come and do another strategic plan and, and give us something to work on. That's all fine and dandy if we actually have something tangible. And it's not just the town's responsibility. I mean, we got, we got McMahon, we got social services. We've got, you know, all these other organizations and we seem to all get in. And I've been in those meetings and we sit and we talk and we talk, but I'm tired, to be honest, talking. Let's help the people that need the help. And so, you know, if you believe that actually putting funding into a consultant and actually getting hard things that we can actually do, I'm all for it. But to talk and, and while, while people are suffering, I would rather us allocate funds to get to the people that are suffering right now. And, you know, if we have to allocate funds because people are having trouble with bills or whatever, I would rather, you know, we as a municipality of 20% FCSS, all the residents of this valley give 20% to FCSS. Do we, we are supposedly your board of directors. Do we have to decide where that 20% goes? I mean, we're not qualified, you know, really reality is we're not qualified. We, we get a presentation once every, you know, year or six months. And, and so we're supposed to be here making the decisions, but it's not really fair to us, but it's not really fair to the people out there suffering. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm sorry to be so direct, but I do not want to see more meetings and more paper shuffled. I want to help the people. And that's what poverty reduction is, is to try and get that source of people out of poverty. So we can give them the life. I mean, the living wage is a great number. But again, how are we going to tell a business that we expect them to pay this? So, so let's just get this going. If we're going to, you know, if council approves a consultant, which will come up through the next budget next week, then hey, I'm all for it. But I wanted, actually, we talked about KPIs and whoever brought that up, smart decision. We need to actually be able to monitor this stuff and say that, yes, we got, you know, if we've got five people out of poverty, great, you know, and, and we're, you know, this whole youth thing is another big, big thing that, you know, is in discussion, but I want to be able to help. If we're going to give the funding, let's help the people. Let's not use it on administration. Let's figure out a way to actually get the money to the people that matter. So that's my two cents, Stephanie.
Do you guys ever have discussions with Drumheller Learning Center as for further education for people and programs that are out there for them?
In terms of money management, et cetera?
Uh, no, they're more like a college. They're like, you can take nursing programs through there and other things. So just like if people are looking to get a job that's paying more and everything, have you ever had discussions with them to see what kind of programs they have in place?
Yeah, and they've actually been a partner with us for quite some time in terms of ensuring that, you know, we used to have the activity guide and that was a really great way for people to be made aware of what courses there were as well as what supports available through the community and what recreation programs there are too. So we've definitely partnered with them over the years to to make sure that people are aware that they are offering opportunities to improve people's training and, and improve their resumes. So that as in addition to what MH Enterprises is doing as well, to ensure that if they wish to perhaps change career or something, that, that they have the opportunity to do that through education.
Thank you.
I guess just if it's okay, just to respond to a couple of points. So in terms of FCSS funding, FCSS funding cannot be spent on intervention. It's preventative. And that's its mandate. So it can't be spent on intervention. So the kinds of programs that we're talking about, like the hot meals program, like subsidizing counselling and helping people right now as they are experiencing poverty to feel the, feel the impact of that less, that's intervention and FCSS money can't be used for it. So I think that's really important to, to know. And in terms of a talking shop, no one wants to sit and spend four years in a talking shop. But as you mentioned, the responsibility for poverty reduction isn't just the councils, right? We're a player at the table. And if we want to have that collective impact and really make a difference, then we do need to have them all there. But I think the time is now to bring those folks together and get a strategy that's very clear of what we're trying to achieve and who's going to be doing what in that process. So I agree with you, Mayor Colberg, that now's the time to make that happen. And that's why the ask is there.
And just to respond to that, I'm not sure I can fully agree with you because I, again, I've been spending a lot of hours on this. And I went like, for example, Towne Cochrane Family Community Support Services, sponsored through community needs through preventive services in Cochrane, which we are focused on neighborhood inclusion, volunteer and poverty reduction related initiatives. So I mean, I don't fully agree that FCSS is not part of that. So, you know, whether we can, I'm not sure why they can and we can't, but I just, again, April, it's not about, it's just, and I know everybody around that table, I think if they were given the direction and, and told, you know, what they, what part they complain in it, I know they want to and they're passionate about it, but we need the, we need that, we need to know what we're going for. It's just like, you know, we as council, you know, we wanted, we want to get the sand trail there. We want to get the burn that one. But we got a list of things that we ought to get. And that's what I hope to see through the poverty reduction is the same, a list of where actual accomplishments. So I hope I'm clear on that. I'm not, the, the, the committee, the, the committee is, you know, they're there, they're ready to work. We just got to figure out what they're working on. So Patrick.
What does a consultant look like budget wise and duration?
So Mauricio has, has put something in the budget for that. I'd have to, is he on the call? I would have to kind of turn to him to ask what that has looked like in the budget. Time wise, you know, it can happen relatively quickly. I'm not saying it's turnover in a month, but certainly this year we would have that.
Maybe we can get that number because we're, budgets decisions are coming up next week. So that would be good if, if council, if you could get Mauricio to get us that number, that'd be good. Awesome. Anything else? Okay, April, thank you and welcome back. And yeah, let's, 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 let's help these people that truly need it. So.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from council? I believe we've got through the agenda. So therefore I need a motion. We go to do a personal evaluation point 19 confidential evaluations. So can I get a motion to go into camera, please? Go ahead, Crystal.
I propose that council close a meeting to the public to discuss the items in section 8.1 of the April 4th, 2022 agenda as per FOIP 19.
Second, there's Stephanie. All in favor? Carrie, thank you, everybody, for being with us today. We will now go into closed session here. And we, once we're done, we'll be done for the day. So we won't be coming back. We will see you all next week, April 11th. And everybody have a great weekend. As I remind you, please help us get our valley clean and clean our earth. So if you can spend 20 minutes a day collecting litter and making our valley beautiful, that'd be wonderful. Thank you, everybody, and have a great night. Take care.